Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'm going to start the zoning board of adjustments meeting for November 9th, 2024. I am the Chair of the Zoning Board, Esther Olson-Murphy. On my right is Lisa Montagno.
Laura.
Laura. See, this is why I write names down, because I panic and I write.
I think they won't pronounce the last name right this time.
Baby steps. That's all I can ask for. On my far left is Martha Pennel and Bob Proctor. Now I'm playing games. Pryor, I know.
Seeing if I was listening?
Yes. And Teresa Page. So first application for the evening is the application of 120... Here we go. It's going to be one of those nights, I apologize in advance. 163 Water Street C2 LLC, a variance from Article 5, Section 5.6.3 and 5.6.6, off-street parking schedule to permit no off-street parking to be provided where 14 spaces are required for a proposed change in use from a retail use to a restaurant use. The subject property is located at 163 Water Street, Unit C2, in the WC Waterfront Commercial Zoning District, tax map parcel 72-17-2, ZP case 24-8.
Hello. Would you like us to sit here or up at the podium?
I think it's your choice.
Yes, whatever makes you feel more comfortable, as long as we can hear you and the folks out back don't come out and say, "No, don't use that."
If you have any issues, just let us know.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Brianna Matusko. I'm from DTC Lawyers, and I'm here on behalf of applicant 163 Water C2 LLC and its application for variance for parking relief. Here with me tonight is Justin Corris, the General Manager of Vino E Vivo and the proposed new dining establishment at 163 Water Street, Unit C2. Anthony Calendrello is the Manager of 163 Water C2 LLC and is the owner of Vino E Vivo. The applicant proposes to operate a restaurant at 163 Water Street, Unit C2. This space is currently occupied by retail store Paz Pet Boutique. Their lease runs out at the end of January 2025. The space is directly above Vino E Vivo, and the new restaurant will be part of Vino E Vivo's license and corporate structure, operating as a single entity. The restaurant will have 40 seats and will be open Tuesday through Thursday from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. The applicant expects to have five to six employees at the restaurant. There will be no live music, and they will strictly enforce last call and a hard out. The applicant intends to restore the historic nature of the space, and construction is slated to begin in March. The proposed opening of the restaurant is July 2025. The applicant is before the board tonight, seeking variance relief from Section 5.6.6 of the zoning ordinance to permit no off-street parking where 14 spaces are required. The applicant seeks relief from the zoning ordinance because he proposes to change the use of the premises from one type of non-residential use to another, and the proposed use does not have sufficient off-street parking spaces to comply with the zoning ordinance. The property is currently grandfathered for five parking spaces that would have been required for the existing retail use. The total off-street parking requirement under the zoning ordinance for the new proposed restaurant is 14 spaces. Therefore, the applicant seeks relief for nine off-street parking spaces. Just to briefly go through the variance criteria. Variance criteria number one and two, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest in the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The purpose of the parking requirement is to ensure that adequate off-street parking exists to serve the needs of the use. Granting relief for nine parking spaces off-site will not change the essential character of the locality, which is a mixed retail office and residential use, all located on a busy main street in the town center, which has free street and municipal parking nearby. Operations of business will be during evening hours when the parking demand from other businesses is virtually nonexistent. Most stores close in downtown Exeter by 5:00 p.m., and parking clears out, especially on this end of Water Street. Granting the variance will not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare, because other free alternatives exist to address parking needs, either from street parking or municipal parking lots at the Boathouse Lot or the Center Street Lot, or by nearby traffic. The maps included in the application indicate the proximity of the municipal lots. The Boathouse Lot is a one-to-two-minute walk from the site and contains 25 general parking spaces and two handicap spaces. The Center Street Lot is a two-minute walk from the site and contains 24 general spaces. Variance criteria number three, substantial justice is done. This requires a balancing test to determine whether denying the variance will provide greater benefit to the public than the benefit which would be derived by the applicant if the variance is granted. Here, there is no benefit to public interest in denying the parking variance, but the denial of the variance would have a significant negative impact on the applicant, because it could impede his ability to move forward with the proposed use of the site as a restaurant. The request for relief is modest and will have an inconceivable impact on downtown parking, and granting the variance will enable a restaurant to open on a portion of Water Street, which has fewer venues for drinks and food than other portions of Water Street, and which could enhance nearby businesses. Variance criteria number four, the value of surrounding properties are not diminished. No diminution of property values will occur if relief is granted from the requirement of nine off-street parking spaces. The locality is currently comprised of mixed uses, small businesses, and upstairs residences. The parking relief will not alter this configuration. The encouragement of foot traffic, especially at this end of Water Street, will encourage other area restaurants and businesses to be patronized, which would enhance, not detract from the value of the surrounding properties. Under variance criteria number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. This requires a showing that the property for which the variance is sought has special circumstances that make it unique relative to other properties in the area, and the board must find that there is no substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and its application to the property, as well as find the application is reasonable. Special conditions do exist with this property. There's no physical space on the property which create off-street parking, and as only one unit in a condominium building, the applicant has no legal authority to alter the status. This unit, which will be restored, is uniquely suited to provide a small intimate setting for a restaurant, and the existence of a five pre-existing non-conforming parking spaces helps in meeting this off-street parking needs. The purpose of the ordinance is to ensure adequate parking is available for people who want to utilize the proposed use. The relief sought is only for nine spaces. Municipal parking is in close proximity at the Boathouse Lot, and further parking is available at the Center Street Lot, and patrons may visit on foot from nearby residences or may already be parked downtown for other uses. These factors indicate that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the application of the requested relief. The request for relief is reasonable, given the available parking located nearby and foot traffic as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and Mr. Corris is available to answer any operational questions related to the business. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anything now?
Yeah, question if I may. I was having trouble figuring out exactly which space it was, because the map that was provided to us, the one that says the Merrill Block condominiums, it doesn't look like C2 is the one that you're actually working on. So can you on this map identify exactly which one it is that's going to become the restaurant? Because I don't think it's C2.
So...
Maybe it is. So is it look at the front door? Is it to the right at the front door? It is C2?
It is C2, yes. There isn't just an on-street entrance.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So the grandfathered five spaces, is that specific to the condo unit or the building overall?
So that's specific to the unit that's operating as the pet store right now? So that's a retail space?
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm assuming that a variance was given for that? Is it?
I don't know for sure.
Are there physically five spaces that you got?
There are not.
So probably received a variance for that? Okay.
So there is no parking?
No.
Okay.
So then I guess my question is, the hours of operation on Friday and Saturday, you said that you would go from 5:00 to 11:00, and I'm wondering what your plan is for the period of time when we have the winter parking ban and cars cannot be in those spaces after 12:00 a.m.? How are you... I'm assuming at 11:00 p.m. close. Is that when you're actually, like, all employees are leaving, or when the restaurant will be closing?
So that would be when the last guests will be ordered out afterwards. It would be finishing and closing for employees, which my understanding doesn't take more than 30 minutes. We would be out of the parking spaces by midnight on those nights.
Okay.
With... I am fairly personally new to the town of Exeter. I'm a Dover resident, and I started this job in July, but my understanding would be like there is some forewarning regarding, like, when those parking bans are happening in regards of snow, like, we would be aware of those.
No, it's standard. You have to be off the parking space up from December 1st through March 15th. There's designated spaces throughout the town that are in that area. I think there's only two or three in that Boathouse parking, and that's, you know, typically used by residents in that area. So everybody's kind of vying for those same spaces. So I just wanted to understand if there was a plan in place for if employees were going to be there after midnight, how that would be addressed?
I don't foresee a circumstance in which employees are there after midnight, and as manager of the location, I can ensure that we're out and closed and done by then. And I will develop a plan to ensure that.
Thank you. Is the plan to stick to the hours that have been outlined, or is there a hope of expanding those if there's level of success, or is that pretty locked in?
We're not expecting an expansion of hours later than what's been provided, and that 11 o'clock is representative of the hard out. As far as opening earlier, I don't believe so as well. The restaurant, Vino E Vivo currently operates, opening at 4:00, and the idea behind this proposed space would it would be intentionally later by design. So that 5:00, I imagine, is going to be firm.
And the two restaurants will coexist? You're not going to close Vino?
They will coexist, yes. They're operating under the same license, and it's being treated on the licensing side as an expansion of service to a new space.
Shared kitchen?
There will be a service kitchen upstairs, so it'll be different menus. There'll be more small plates. I don't want to say bar fare, because it won't be bar fare, but it won't be the full entree service being offered. More of a smokesome, small plates and desserts.
If anybody... Is there any public... I'll look up the public, if anybody has anything to comment on it? You can come up... We'll let you go to this mic. We'll use all the mics today. State your name, where you...
Anson Lloyd. I'm a resident in the building, upper floor. I share a residency at the building. I'm on the condo board of directors for the association. I function as the secretary. Have you guys addressed waste management with the new restaurant and the needs of recycling, composting, and our current 10-yard dumpster?
I would ask that you address your question to the board, and then they will answer later.
Your concern is waste management?
We're near maximum capacity with three food venues right now. I oversee the conversations with Troyana Waste Management. Anytime there's a missed pickup or an overflow of trash, or cardboard for that matter.
Did you have any other concerns?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll address those. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak on this? Your turn to respond to the comments from the public.
It is not a conversation I've currently been a part of, but as someone who is also aware of the use and the current difficulty regarding those spaces, it is a conversation I'm happy to engage in as we move closer to our opening day.
Also, I would just add, this really doesn't have any bearing on the parking spaces, obviously.
Is there a... Would this project go before planning? Like, how would that... No, it wouldn't? Okay.
Well, I'll ask counsel for the applicant. I did not expect that this would need to go to planning board.
No, and I know that most of the town is aware of this business. I know that I spoke with Doug, and he said that the fire department, and I believe Dave Sharple's has also been made aware of the business, so I'm not... I don't believe it's going before the planning board.
I just didn't know if there was a venue or an avenue to address the...
I don't think that it's going to go to planning. I don't see any reason for it.
Okay. So just to be clear, the waste management isn't overlapping with the parking or taking up parking, existing parking spaces?
Is there any more questions from the board? Okay, so I'm going to close public session so we can begin our deliberations.
I think, given the situation downtown, this is a perfectly reasonable application, and I would say that they meet all the criteria for a variance and that we... Something that we should move toward approval. No problems with this whatsoever, especially given the number of times in the past that we have granted similar variances for other businesses in the downtown area.
I would agree with that. I don't see this being impactful to downtown and congestion in the area or lack of parking. I think it was well illustrated on the maps that there are two municipal lots that are... And while we have the winter ban to consider, those are within one or two minutes walking, and if you go a little bit farther than that and get your steps, there's definitely additional options to that.
Does anybody feel the need to go through the variance criteria one by one?
I don't.
We don't have to.
Yeah, I think they were fine. Pretty well articulated, in agreement with what was outlined.
Will you accept a motion?
I would love a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move to accept the application of 163 Waters C2 LLC for a variance from Article 5. I'm going to do what you did. Article 5, Section 5.6.3 and 5.6.6, off-street parking schedule as presented.
Second. Any discussion? So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion presented? Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. You are... The motion has passed, 5-0. Congratulations. You don't need to find magic parking space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to Exeter.
Yeah, thank you.
I wonder if they got the subtlety I was just saying.
At the moment, we're sort of depressed in scholars and sweet potato stuff.
Oh, no, they're...
Did you get it?
I did, because I think I got the same correct.
Okay, so on to application number two. This is the application from Stone Arch Development Corp. for a variance to Article 4, Section 4.3, to prevent a minor subdivision of the property located at 12 Little River Road with less than the required lot frontage with and with the frontage on a private right-of-way. Subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax parcel 62-90-1, ZB A case 24-9. The applicant... Let you begin.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is Christian Smith. I'm an engineer with Beals Associates, representing the applicant on the project. John O'Neill of Stone Arch Development is here with us as well. So we're hoping this is a fairly simplistic question for the board. Essentially, when the church parcel was divided formally from the existing house, which is now residence, used to be the rectory building, you know, many years ago, was completed, this particular property was left, and as I think you probably are all aware, five condominium units were then approved on the church parcel when the church vacated the property and decided they were willing to sell. What the applicant is looking for is on the 63,775 square feet remaining. This is the existing conditions plan, and I've tried to outline that in blue, aside from where it butts the river, is to divide that into two pieces, and that will facilitate one additional dwelling unit. As depicted here on the variance plan, you can see, as you look at this, that the property is fairly encumbered by wetland buffers, shoreline, local shoreline district buffers, obviously the large utility easement, the gas easement that runs through the property, and all he's looking to do is try and create two parcels where, in actuality, if all that wasn't the case, the size criteria for this zone would allow 15,000 square foot lots, because it is served by water and sewer. So that is the simplicity of the request, and I can point out to you that the existing 20 and 1/2 feet of frontage along Little River, I guess that's still Little River. I don't know where it stops being Penn and starts being Little River, but exists here. Then the parcel division comes in in this direction, and we have a right-of-way easement, essentially is what it is, that covers the common drive that goes in. Obviously, this is going to remain private. They will be part of the association that would be subject and required to maintain that road. The town will have nothing required to do as far as maintenance, repairs to that section of the road. And again, if the chairman would like me to read through the criteria, I'm happy to do that at this time, or I could address questions and do that at a later time. I'll leave that up to you.
Why don't you go through them quickly, just so they're on the record?
Sure. Yep. Okay, so number one, not contrary to the public interest. It's our position that proposed variance is not contrary to the public interest, as it will yield two lots much larger than the minimum required in the R2 zone. No threat to public health, safety, or welfare will result from granting of the proposed variance, as the private road section of the frontage will be maintained by the HOA, and the lot, if not so encumbered by utility easements and environmental setbacks, could sustain four conventional lots based on R2 zoning. Spirit of the ordinance is observed. The spirit of the ordinance is observed as a proposed lot frontage is provided, albeit on a private road, which will be constructed to town design standards, but simply maintained by a private entity. The lot resulting in reduced frontage provides more than twice the frontage that it was approved for in 2021 by variance, and the variance would not result in a development that would materially alter the character of the neighborhood. As previously mentioned, the lots would be larger than most of the abutting lots, and because of this, we feel that nothing about this proposal could be deemed injurious to the public rights. Substantial justice would be done by granting the variance, as no harm to the general public will be realized from such an approval. Therefore, it seems clear that the benefit to the applicant could not be outweighed by harm to the public. The values of surrounding properties not being diminished, it's apparent that allowing reduced frontage and frontage on a private way that is constructed to town standards just to facilitate a two-lot subdivision, adding one dwelling on two parcels which are more than double the size of the minimum zoning requirement, will not diminish the surrounding property values. Additionally, there will remain existing vegetation, and I believe that John intends to actually plant more screening vegetation as well, from the public portion of Little River and Pen Lane. And finally, the hardship question. Based on the 65-foot-wide utility easement that bisects the parcel near its frontage, along with the municipal wetland and shoreline buffers, create a right... Creation of a right-of-way for municipal acceptance would essentially reduce any potential building envelope that this parcel has to an unusable size. The private way has an existing access easement to benefit the parcel in question that maintains the intent of frontage on a public street. Based on these factors, strict conformance to the ordinance would eliminate the proposed reasonable use of the property and therefore result in an unnecessary hardship.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions before I...
Mr. Pryor.
Mr. Smith, can you explain, please, the... What the result would be of... Forgive me if I didn't pick up on this in your presentation. What the result of a denial would be of this variance? Given the amount of work...
The result, yes, absolutely. The result of the denial would be we would not be able to proceed forward to the planning board with a two-lot subdivision request. The existing building would remain, and that would be all that would be allowed to be constructed.
So the existing building is the home to the left that backs up on the... Because the other building is down, is that correct?
The church has been razed. The church has been razed, that's correct.
Right, so the existing building is just that home on the left that backs up to the right?
That's right, yeah, the former rectory building.
But there was a prior approval, pardon, there was previous approval. Has that expired?
For the condos or?
For the condos.
No, that's actively under construction.
Okay.
Yep.
What is the state of the progress of the construction right now? It seems like there was considerable land prep going on right now.
Yeah, I'll defer to John, because I haven't been out there in a few days, and I know that changes quickly.
So this foundation is completely in, this foundation's in, this foundation's in, this foundation's getting poured tomorrow, and this footing is being poured on Monday. So we've done a lot of work out there. All the gravels are piled up here, the water has been run off the road, the sewers off the road, and the gas is planned on going in in mid-December.
How is it that you've proceeded this far without having the variance in place?
I didn't need a variance, this was already approved, these five lots.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Pryor?
Please.
The variance request is simply for this parcel, this is the parcel, this is the five acres that was approved for the condominiums, and this parcel has the 20.5 feet of frontage on the public street, and all Mr. O'Neill's trying to do is take the frontage that it does have and cut it so that he can basically create a second lot here that would be part and parcel with the maintenance of the roadway, but not necessarily part of the condominium, because these would be then two viable frontage lots. Yeah, so it's actually to provide a subdivision of this 63,000 square foot parcel into two.
So there's a separate home there or not? That's a proposed house?
That's a proposed house, the one down here by the frontage.
Ah.
Yeah, that is what we're looking to-
That was, I'm sorry, Christian, that was my confusion, because I thought that was the little house, the last house on the left, before you get-
Oh, no, that would actually be off paper here, just down in that location.
That's why I was confusing. This is a proposed home.
No, my apology, that's correct.
Now, okay.
So the prior approval before the 2021 meeting, this was all one lot?
Correct.
And then it was subdivided into two with the right-of-way kind of being split with the 20 and the, what is it?
Forty-five, I think.
Forty-five? So the 45 serves that parcel where the condominiums will be, and then the 20 serves the lot that has the existing house, which is the one that's-
The northerly one, yes.
Yep, and then, so with this proposed change, the new building will retain that 20, 20.5 feet of actual public road frontage.
Public street frontage, correct.
And then the, I'll call it the-
The existing house will take its frontage from the private road.
Right, so it won't have any actually public road-
Public right-of-way frontage, that's correct.
But there would be frontage on what will be a private road that is mimicking the town standards.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and it is absolutely built the same as any other town road.
So to go back to my original question, a denial would not impact the five condominiums that are being built off to the right?
Correct.
It would not impact the existing home?
Correct.
But it would prevent the construction of one additional property?
Absolutely correct.
In one home, I see.
Since those-
Took me a while.
It's all right, it seems like you're there.
It felt like a Rubik's Cube to me, I had to look at it.
Yeah, my apologies, maybe I shouldn't have put the footprint on there, too.
No, I missed the 2021 meeting, I wasn't here yet, so I had a little catching up to do.
With the proposed house, there's no question as far as setbacks are concerned, there's no issue there.
Right.
Although that's preliminary at this stage, so you would come back if it had to-
I mean, yeah, if that had to change, obviously if we needed more relief, but I think John's intention is without question, he's going to meet the setbacks with whatever he builds there, and, you know, that will result in a home that looks very similar to what you see on this page, I have no doubt.
So all seven homes on the proposed lot, on the proposed plan here, would share that one driveway, and they would all be on private road as opposed to town road?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And will all seven be part of the HOA, or is that just the five?
I think it's just going to be the five, but these two lots will be tied in specific to plowing, winter maintenance, repairs, all of that part of dealing with a private road. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, so there's, it'll actually be a condominium development, it'll be a subdivision of the two lots, and then there'll be an umbrella over the entire thing that basically makes sure they meet the same rules, they're sharing equally on the road maintenance, on the, you know, the sewer, there's water, everything else that takes place out there, repaving of the road, everything, but the condominium development, subdivision, and then an umbrella carrying and protecting all of them, all seven.
So the HOA will actually be the umbrella organization?
Yes.
Got it. That makes more sense. Be good for now.
Welcome back.
Okay. So we're going to open up to public comment, does anybody here have anything to say for or against this proposal? I guess it's back to us already, Bob. Did you have anything else?
I was hoping somebody was going to do our work for us there.
Well-
I object. No?
They've all shown their cards.
Yes, they have. They've all said they're here for the next hearing. Well, then.
My question is, I drove out there this evening, it was a little dark, because it was after five, but the road doesn't, it looks like you've cut the road back, but the road's not actually built yet.
It's not built. So what we did was, because it was a parking lot out there, we stripped back all the parking lot, and we graded, we actually crushed it all, so that's going to be the gravel for the road. So I've got a big pile of gravel out there.
I saw that, too.
So once the five foundations go in, then the electric goes in, the water and gas goes in, and then we spread out the gravel. So the foundations look a little high now, but they're going to be perfectly graded when it's all done.
I guess, if a motion were proposed, would you be upset if there was a mention of that the road will be built to town spec? Since that road isn't built yet, you could say it's going to be built to town spec, and then at the end be like, no, never mind.
It has to be, though. It has to be. So it's being reviewed by the town.
Okay, well then, don't mind.
Yeah, and that's a good point that John brings up, this will have to go for the, through the planning board for a formal subdivision approval as well, but the road construction is actually a condition of approval for the condominiums.
Okay, yeah, good to know.
Well, that was my last question, was the planning board, so there we are.
Anything else? Are we ready to? That was a big sigh.
No, I think I've got the questions.
Okay, so we're going to close public session, go to deliberation. Thoughts? I guess I'll start. In the zoning, there doesn't seem to be much of an issue with having, because I guess what this comes down to, we're talking about frontage, is what really this is boiling down to, when you can have frontage on a private road. So that I'm not worried about, it's-
You said you can have?
Yes. But I guess mine is, I don't remember what frontages are required in the zone, and I'm pretty sure 45 isn't enough.
I think it's 100.
I think it's 100.
Yeah, so it's, are we, it's more going back to, did we close you?
Okay.
But we might, we might be looking for help, and if we, we will reach out.
Were you saying frontage for the front of the lot, or frontage?
Road frontage.
But road frontage on the private road?
There, I believe I read in here that road frontage can be on a public way, a private way, so I'm not worried about the fact they only have 20 feet in a public way, personally. Others may feel different.
Plus, 79.5 on the private way?
Yes.
And then this is R2, right?
Yep.
So there is 100 foot of frontage, if you add 79.5 and 20.5, I'm sure that's not accidental.
Correct. But then that back one has, the existing one has 45 of frontage on the private way.
Right, it's Lot Two that-
Because of the way the line is, the property line is designed, and the way the road is going to veer off to the right there, there certainly is frontage, that there's going to be no obstruction between that second house in, whatever it's called, Lot Two, and the road, it's just that it's not-
Abutting the road.
Exactly, abutting the road, that there will be no construction proposed in that triangle of land. So that house could conceivably have well in excess of 100 feet of frontage on the private road as well. And there's certainly no question about the acreage.
Yep.
Well, and that is the predominant issue, right, is that there's multiple land hardships that are forcing the properties to be here, but there's still plenty of land.
Because even if you look at where they have the proposed house, it is between those easements, there is really not a lot of places to put a house.
Yeah.
So it is, like they said, it's going to, that they can't expand past this, this is kind of it.
Right, and when I think about the frontage requirement and the purpose for that ordinance, it's in large part to prevent the appearance of overcrowding. Given the size of the lots, I don't think we're bumping up against that purpose too greatly, especially considering that we can't further condense it with the confines of the property.
That is a relatively, while there's .71 acres in Lot One, there's a large segment of it that is really not continuous with the house off to the side there, so that looks to be about maybe 40% of it beyond that pinch point, beyond that corner there, maybe 40 or even 50% of the lot is back there. But it is part of the lot.
Yeah, it's still usable land, actually, you just got to put your shed on that back section and not by the side of your house.
Yeah, there's, I don't see, there's no elevations on here, so I don't know how fast it drops off. I know it drops off back toward Little River there.
How you doing, Martha?
I have no problems.
With it?
Don't worry.
Thank you for clarifying. Everybody has problems.
Martha's good.
Damn, pretty good.
Do we feel the, I'll ask again, do we feel the need to go through the variance criteria on this one? Are we ready to drop a motion?
And the front lot really has, with the 20.5 and the 79.5, has the frontage, it's really-
It's that guy's backyard.
It's the, yeah.
That's, I guess, when it was mentioned there could add additional screening, that helps with that, because that house, it's meeting its setbacks, but there's a house right on the other side of that.
Right on the other side of that property line.
Yes, I think that-
I'm sure that house is very close, I don't know where it is on this map, but it's very-
But I think the screening is important. Unfortunately.
Unless the chair allows it.
Well, I think what, when we make the motion, the application has existing vegetative screening, and I would just say, you know, but the applicant said that they would enhance the vegetative screening, and so maybe we make that part of the motion, if that's appropriate. Because I seem to remember that the vegetative screening on that left side of the lot is, leaves a little bit to be desired.
Yeah, I didn't think there was a tree line there at all, to be honest with you.
To the left.
So I think we just add that to the motion, if that's a concern.
You're right, I don't think there's, looking at it, much in a way of tree coverage.
But the abutter is not here, so if there was a major concern, I would assume the abutter would be here.
So he's right up against that telephone and gas easement as well, but it's, boy, the house is really, really limited in where it can go, isn't it? It feels a little crowded to me, but there is sufficient land, and there is sufficient frontage, and we do have to keep in mind the specific relief that we're being asked.
Yes.
I'd rather someone else made the motion.
I can see Teresa working in her brain.
Well, I, I guess I have questions about conditions we can impose, but I could take a stab at it, and if-
I think if you're concerned about the vegetation, I believe that is something that was mentioned by the applicant, so it's not exactly that we're pulling something out of-
That's right.
Out of the same area.
Yeah, or just adding them.
Oh, by the way, I think you should do this, so I don't think it would be necessarily an imposition at this point, if that was your concern.
And then the specifications of the road, could we do a condition where it's essentially the same as the condition that was put on the condominium, where-
I believe that the road has to be built to town standards.
Unless they're lying to us, this part of the-
The road has to be built to town.
And they know they'll get caught, so they probably won't lie, so I think-
The road has to be built to town standards, so I don't think that we need to put a-
Yeah, I don't think we put that as a condition.
We don't need to specify that.
Okay.
As presented, we covered that.
Okay. Here we go.
You got this.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the application of Stone Arch Development Corp. for a variance from Article Four, Section 4.3, to permit a minor subdivision of the property located at 12, is it 12A Little River? 12A Little River Road with less than the required lot frontage with and with frontage on a private right-of-way. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel 6290-1, ZBA case 24-9, as presented. With the condition that sufficient screening be provided between lot, is it Lot One and the abutter?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
What was, how did you phrase it? You said, on the, what was the word you used on your vegetative, sufficient?
Sufficient vegetative screening?
Okay.
Or additional vegetative screening?
What does sufficient mean?
Yeah, I know, that's what, sufficient was the only word that I got stuck on there. I would say additional.
Additional vegetative.
We do have a motion that's been seconded, we need to amend the, we have to amend the additional motion. Madam Chair, I would move to amend the additional motion by removing the word sufficient, replacing it with the word additional. Are you okay with that?
I-
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The amendment?
Of the amendment, yes.
Aye.
Aye. We've accepted the amendment, five-nothing, so now back to the original motion.
With the amendment.
As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. So the motion has passed, five to zero. You have received your variance. Congratulations.
Thank you, and just to ease the mind of the boards, the board members, Mr. O'Neill has actually already been working with that abutter, in hopes that this would get passed. I forget who mentioned, I think it might have been Mr. Pryor, but you're correct, that was a big tangled mess of invasive weeds and brush, and the neighbor has been thrilled that John was willing to remove that for him, and they are working together with regard to a- him, and they are working together with regard to a replanting that appeases him, so. I just wanted that to be in your ears, whether or not it makes record matters not.
Thanks, Christian, appreciate it.
I like hearing those things.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Are you staying with us?
Yeah.
Unfortunately for you.
Let's get organized, if, everybody's going to shuffle. Third application of the evening. The application from Stone Arch Development Corp. for variance from Article Four, Section 4.4, seeking relief from the required minimum lot side and rear setbacks and the minimum density of the lot area in unit requirements and maximum building coverage required for proposed residential development on property located at 57 Portsmouth Ave. The subject property is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District, tax map parcel 65-137, ZPA, oh, ZBA case 24-10. You clearly know what you're doing, so.
You're doing good now?
You're doing better than I am today.
Well, let's hope that trend continues. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, again, Christian Smith with Beals Associates. Again, the applicant is John O'Neal with Stone Arch Development. I think you're all familiar with this particular property, it is directly adjacent, just, I guess, south of the Hampton Inn, and this, this existing conditions plan that I submitted with the application depicts where the house was. That house is completely razed now, this is a vacant lot that we're talking about. So what John's hope for the parcel is, is to create two triplex buildings on the lot, which, as you can imagine, creates a lot of, a lot of requests for relief, simply due to the size and shape of that, of that parent parcel. So he's, he's intending to do a six-unit townhouse style, as I mentioned, two three-unit buildings, residential condominium development, located at 57 Portsmouth Avenue. The driveway entrance will be expanded, but will utilize the existing curb cut on Portsmouth Avenue that served the previously demolished single-family home. The units are proposed to be served by overhead power, underground utilities, with municipal water and sewer services. We anticipate closed drainage on this parcel and tying into the Portsmouth Avenue existing closed drainage system, which obviously we will work through with DPW and the powers that be in that entity, and, and that is, that is largely it. I think I laid out the requests, of which there are a few. And again, Madam Chair, would you prefer that I read through the criteria at this time?
Yes, please.
The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The proposed six-unit townhouse-style residential development will not be contrary to public interest, as the development will provide alternative housing opportunities to single-family residences, will provide additional tax revenue for the municipality from the parcel. The proposed layout provides a much improved entrance drive, and parking will be located behind the front building and will result in a more aesthetically pleasing view from Portsmouth Avenue, that means as if, and as opposed to if the parking were in the front. In addition, the, while the setbacks in density are not within the letter of the ordinance for the C2 zone, this type of housing along this portion of Portsmouth Avenue is supported in the master plan. Number two, spirit of the ordinance is observed. We feel that that is the case, as the access to the multifamily district, off-street parking are permitted uses, and residential conversions are permitted, use or accessory allowed by special exception. The property, as previously mentioned, was formerly occupied by a single-family residential dwelling. Substantial justice is done, we feel that that is the case, as there is no gain to the general public that would outweigh the loss to the developer, that would result from a strict adherence to the substantial setback in density requirements imposed in the C2 zones, which are, you know, specifically targeted towards commercial development. Additionally, we feel this type of residential housing, again, is supported by the master plan in this area on Portsmouth Avenue. Oops, I'm turning too quickly. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. It seems logical to us that the surrounding properties would not be diminished but conversely enhanced by the addition of quality triplexes, which will improve the street view of the currently vacant lot. In addition, enhanced landscape screening to the abutting residential properties will be provided through the planning board site review application process, and this will provide privacy for both abutting parcels as well as future potential occupants of the townhouse units. The final piece, the hardship question. Due to the size and shape of the parcel, the resultant building envelope would be approximately 828 square feet. I can kind of show you where that is. You do the physical, the legitimate setbacks in the zone, that is what you would end up with for a building center after you get that little truncated rectangle.
Wait, you can't fill in there?
Well, you can't fill this in there, that's for certain. And again, these, these provisions are generally specific to commercial development and need not be directly applied to proposed development of residential townhouse units. It's worthy of noting that the parcel is in close proximity to the C1 district, which begins at Highland Street, and C1 zoning provision would eliminate much of the variance relief needed for this proposal within the C2. Finally, the proposed use and density are reasonable, particularly in light of the fact that the parcel is served by public services, water and sewer.
The questions are going to start now.
So many questions.
I'm certain.
So many questions. I get the setbacks. The density seems pretty significant to me. This is a lot that has a fairly significant slope to it. What is your proposal there? Are you going to have to dig it out and retaining?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, I believe the, the back building will be drive under garages, and the front would probably be at-grade garages.
Would you please say that again about the garages?
Yes, the, the back building, each of these units will have a garage at ground level, and so the back building, that hill would need to be cut into, you can see, we actually show what could be a retaining wall back there, that's the, the very heavy line to the south of the parcel, and actually goes through where the, where the proposed turnout would be for the, for the driveway in between the two as well. And that would be at-grade, so basically, that's going to be slab-on-grade, and the back of that parcel, Mr. Pryor is probably going to be just a formed, combined retaining wall slash frost wall for the foundation.
I note that you have not asked for parking relief, you're aware of the number of parking spaces required with this type of development, and.
Yeah, I, I believe, John, you're giving them, you're giving them two in each garage, plus we have one ancillary guest space off the end of the, the drive aisle.
You need one per four or segment thereof, you would need two additional guest spaces.
Oh, any segment thereof, well, I think we can, we can figure that out, for sure.
So it's one per bedroom plus?
Plus one per four.
Plus one, one per bedroom plus one per four, although I haven't looked, and Teresa is, it might be different in the zone.
Isn't it?
Well, so, it's C2, so the residential uses that are permitted are mixed-use neighborhood development, which I don't think we're looking at here.
Correct.
And then a residential conversion, which has its own separate criteria under Schedule One, which includes not more than four units, so.
Is it a conversion? Because it's a empty lot, so what do you?
Well, that's what I'm struggling with a bit.
It was a single-family residence in its previous instantiation, and it is not currently.
Right, and one question I had was when the previous residence was, was taken down?
Do you know when that was raised, John? It's been a few years.
It's been a long time.
It was at least five years ago.
Yeah, I just said five.
Longer.
Yeah, I think, I was thinking more like eight.
Yeah, very, very possible. Yeah, I know, I drive by it all the time as well, because I live in town, and it has been in its current state for as long as I can remember. Mr. Pryor, just to jump back to your prior comment very quickly, I did just look, there is 20-plus feet in that little paved parking section that goes up behind the, what we're calling the back building, would be the building bottom of the page, there are two, two spaces proposed there, so this would be parking.
Okay.
I guess my question's probably more of a planning, but fire accessibility, like when you put buildings in like this, doesn't the fire department want to have access? You can't.
Well, these are going to be sprinkler, so that, they certainly would, and I think, I can't remember exactly where the hydrant is, but it is not too far away from us, and they would, if, if they're, one of these buildings were involved, they would hook up to the fire hydrant with the truck and the pumper truck in Portsmouth Avenue and fight it from, from that. You know, I mean, they're not going to want to pull a pumper truck right up next to a burning building anyway. There's got to be some distance there.
Do you have to go for technical review on this?
This would absolutely have to go through full site plan review.
Which includes technical review?
Absolutely, yep.
So fire will have a chance.
They will look at it, police will look at it, DPW, yep, without question.
I don't want to ask about a traffic study, and nor do I want to read a traffic study. Are you at all concerned about the access onto what is a fairly busy road?
John has already engaged a traffic consultant.
My sympathies.
So, that's anticipated, yeah.
Do you anticipate that exiting this property would be strictly outbound on Portsmouth Ave, service to the right, or do you think it would?
I would assume that's, that's how it's going to end up, yes.
Because you're pretty close to a light there as well.
Exactly, I mean, you get by the Hampton Inn, and there's a light right there.
There's a light at either end, actually.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a light either way.
Yeah, my, my presumption is that's what the traffic consultant will recommend. I don't have that definitive answer for you at this time, Mr. Pryor, but I would have a hard time believing he's going to recommend it.
But the point is, you can't do anything, you can't go further without the setback and the density variances that you're applying.
Well, we're, right, we would be back to a drawing board.
No further questions, Madam Chair, from me.
I'm a little confused. Does each unit has an underground garage? Is that it?
A ground-level garage, yes.
A ground-level garage?
Yep.
Now, where is the front door to the back units?
The front door to the back units, John? Oh, yeah, of course.
So these are town, townhouse condominiums, so what happens is, you can absolutely see the front is coming in this way here, but on this side here.
You're between us and the picture, sir.
There's a service door, so there's, there's a garage door, this is a 24-feet wide, there's a garage door and a service door that comes in right here. So you have to have, you have to have a means of egress besides the garage door, I don't know if you have a picture of this, Christian, but there's going to be a double garage door and a set of stairs going into the first floor. So the way they operate is, the first floor is a garage and an office space, and then the, the ground floor, the first floor is the living space, living room, dining room, office, and the second floor is three bedrooms, two to three bedrooms, two bedrooms in a study. But it's a typical townhouse layout. Uniquely here, I just wanted to explain this, this may be a 12-foot foundation wall, quite, quite honestly, it's a 12-foot foundation wall that serves as retainage.
12-foot high?
Yes.
12-foot high?
Yep, 12-foot high, and it allows people to actually have a patio, there'll be a patio up back here on those. So we've done this quite a bit, I've done this in Dover, I did this in Portsmouth, and it's pretty popular, and quite frankly, you know, the two spots inside are, they're adequate, that's all people are looking for right now.
And I would ask, we do have a very, very cursory rendering, I would ask the, the member who, who posed the question specific to what they are going to have for front facades, would you like to see that? I bring it, I know it doesn't have much to do with what we're asking, but.
Something beyond that, Christian?
I think that's it.
Yeah, I think that's it as well. You can sort of see the garage doors for the back ones in the, your building there, that's a little different, yeah.
Well, that's actually.
That's a, that's a little bit different perspective, I think, than the one that was applied.
Very different.
But you, well, what you can see is the, the mandor next to the garage door that John was talking about on that end unit, so, if that helps.
Hey, you keep setting me up for this stuff. Where do the women go in? I hate that, I hate that term mandor, it's just so flippin' dated, it's not even funny.
I know, it is, it sounds like I'm talking in the 1950s.
Can you call it a person door, please?
Then where does the dog go?
Thank you.
We'll have a dog door inside the human door.
Okay. So we don't, we have any more questions for now? Open it up to the public. Okay. Does anybody from the public like to speak on this application?
My name's Ryan, Ryan O'Brien, I live at 20 Haven Lane. I think it would be great to see something in this spot that has been vacant for so long. In, in general, I, given the proposed development in the C2 zone here, I don't have an issue with infringing on the side setbacks, although the butters may.
You're going to need to speak into the microphones, we can hear you.
I don't have a problem with infringing on the side setbacks, the butters may, but I don't, in, in general. What I do have an issue with is the separation between residential zones and commercial zones, and there are numerous examples of basically a vapor-thin barrier between the residential zone and the commercial zone along Portsmouth Avenue, and I would like to see that not continue. So you have, I believe this is a residential R2 zone back here, and this is a C2 zone, and even though this is a residential use of the C2 zone, it still abuts to single-family residential units, and so from that standpoint, I think it's absolutely critical to maintain a significant buffer between the C2 zone and the residential zone. I don't think it's fair to eliminate that, which is essentially what's happening here. In terms of a front setback, I think it's entirely likely, if all the development along Portsmouth Avenue that is basically set up to happen with the mund and, and, and the proposed development along there, it's entirely likely that Portsmouth Avenue will need to be widened at some point, and if this building is that far forward, you're not going to be able to put a second lane there. So those would be my comments about this.
Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Frank from 31 Haven Lane.
Sorry, where is Haven Lane on this map? I'm just curious, are you, is Haven Lane abutting to this unit, this property?
No, we're on the opposite side of Portsmouth Ave.
Thank you, I see, okay, okay.
We just, I just want to say that my family and I are not opposed to construction at this site, it's been vacant for a long time, like we said, and we'd like to see something new in our neighborhood. That said, we feel that what's being proposed here is too much for too small a lot. The lot was originally a single-family home, it was sized for that, and it's, the lot has not changed in size. We just feel that what's being proposed here would negatively impact the surrounding properties and the neighborhood, just with overcrowding.
Anybody else?
Talk to me into it.
I don't like, I could see it, it was brewing.
My wife didn't want me to come up. She says I got to get my facts right. She says I got to get my facts right. My name's Steve Taylor, I also live on Haven Lane at 30 Haven Lane. We are talking about traffic in that area and drainage of water causing flooding on Haven Lane, and I feel if you put those six units in that tight area, your traffic problem is going to be threefold with the 111 units they want to put on the side where Sunnell Auto Parts is. And also, there's a problem with drainage from those proposed 111 sites, and I think adding six onto that small lot that was vacant since 2015 and barely could fit 12 cars in there comfortably, you're going to be overcrowded beyond what it can maintain for those lights. Those lights will have to change. It'll become, having that second light where it enters into the hospital, those six units trying to get in and out are going to be complaining to you about, we need something done for access out the back. Am I okay, honey?
Always good to check. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Kyle Taylor, I also reside at 30 Haven Lane. I just wanted to state real briefly that Hampton Inn does use this property as overflow parking. Hampton Inn already cannot handle the amount of parking that they have alone, and I don't know if they have an agreement for renting this current vacant property, but on a given weekend with weddings that reside, that go on in town here, they're using this vacant property quite a bit for overflow parking, so please keep that in mind, thank you.
Thanks.
Back to you folks, do you have anything to say in response to the concerns?
Well, yeah, specific to traffic, I mean, typically, your individual home, dwelling unit, doesn't matter if it's a three-plex or a single-family house, they're going to generate somewhere in the neighborhood of 11 or 12 vehicle trips today, that's per day, that's out and in. So, I think to say that six homes here is going to create a threefold problem to 120 units across the street, which is evidently proposed, the math just doesn't work that way. But again, we're working with a traffic engineer, and that's not a problem. We will get that figured out, we fully anticipate this being a write-out only out of this property. And I think, if I understood correctly, I think there was commentary specific to these folks at some point wanting an exit to the back. There's absolutely no propensity for that to happen because there's residential houses back there. There's absolutely no right-ofways, no room, and if Hampton Inn is using this property and has an agreement to do so, I am not aware of it, and secondarily, if this is constructed, that obviously will not be an allowance for them in the future. Did I miss anything?
Drainage, Christian.
Drainage, yes. This drainage is intended to connect down to the catch basin, which you see right on the corner of the little sidewalk turn that comes out to Portsmouth Ave from Hampton Inn and continues what would be eastward from there. Again, that, very preliminary, we haven't met with DPW. There are certainly things that can be done on-site to, you know, mitigate any concerns that they might have, you know, we could put stone drip edges that just infiltrate as much water as we can get there, and then the overflow gets to that basin. But as it stands right now, I mean, that's how the parcel drains, it drains down to the sidewalk into that existing catch basin and goes east through the existing municipal storm sewer.
Thank you. Does anybody else come up with additional?
I have additional comments.
It's up to you, Madam Chair.
I think we're already past the public comment. My apologies. Is anybody else on the board have a question for the applicant? My question is, you mentioned a couple times that this is a commercial district, so the setbacks are more aggressive than a, say, residential area, essentially, so...
Yeah, I don't know if they're more aggressive, but they certainly seem to want to push development off the right-ofway. So, I mean, that seems to me a reasonable assumption.
Well, I guess my question is, that is the case, I went through and compared, and they have 50-foot setbacks?
Yes.
But the setbacks you're requesting don't align with any other residential?
Understood.
So, and it's, you're asking for nine, and it's 25 in a residential area, so I just want to make sure that it's aware that it's not, you'd be here even if it was a residential build.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else before I...
No.
Okay, I'm going to close public session, we're going to go to deliberation. I'm going to say first, there are, what, five, essentially five requests in here, so we need, do we want to discuss them as a whole or individually?
I would suggest combining the three setbacks at least into one, and then I think density should be discussed separately, and I don't know whether you want to combine building coverage with density, which is sort of appropriate as well.
Yeah, we'll make it two.
Yeah, but I would discuss the three setbacks.
I guess, let's start with setbacks.
With regard to the setbacks, I don't really have a problem with what's being proposed here as far as the setbacks are concerned. The, I don't know if you remember the conversation that took place quite a few years ago about potentially adopting something, it was called Form-Based Code at the time, and one of the initiatives there, this is a previous planning director in the town, one of the initiatives there was to actually move some of the buildings toward the road and have the parking behind, so we didn't, you didn't drive down specifically Portsmouth Avenue, and it'd be parking lot after parking lot with buildings set way back. There was an, and I do not know, nor if we had an application here for what's being proposed where the auto parts store is across from the mall there, the strip mall there, but I would hope that that would also perhaps not have all the parking right up front. So, I applaud that, I have no problem with the parking being off. So, with regard to the setbacks, if we are talking about them separately, I have no problem with the setbacks. The rear, I find it interesting that all of the members of the public that are here are from Haven Lane and not from...
The butters. The butters behind.
Not Hill, Highland, thank you, Highland, who were obviously notified of this. And, you know, there are homes there, they sit higher, I think they'd be looking perhaps over this. I don't think they would necessarily be negatively impacted by the proximity of this to that, what would be the rear setback of this.
And we did have an application at this, for this before, and they did come to the meeting.
Oh, there's been another proposal for this parcel?
It was a, it was a single building with, like, eight units in it. They're talking about using, I think it was short-term rentals for nurses.
Oh, interesting, I don't, I must have missed that meeting, I don't recall that.
So, this isn't the first...
The first proposal here, yeah.
I can't remember what their concerns were, but their concerns might have been more with the short-term.
I'm in agreement with Bob as far as the setbacks is concerned, and I think one of the strongest parts of this proposal and this argument is the fact that its proximity to C1, which is like, which starts at Highland, which is right around the corner, every building between Highland and this property is residential, except there, and so, it's not like, you know, we're talking about residential units going next to a couple of, you know, commercial units, right? So, and if you look at the difference between the setbacks between C1 and C2, they're dramatic. I mean, the numbers, I actually looked at the numbers in comparison, like, so for front setback, they're asking for a relief to nine, in C1, it's 10, right? 10 feet is the setback in C1 versus C2. So, it seems to me that those setbacks are reasonable, given what's in the proximity of the other, the zone right next to it.
You're saying that the nine-foot is quite reasonable because it's so close to what would be required on C1?
In a C1.
Which is close by. And all we're really doing is extending residential from Highland Avenue, one property further, whatever it is, north.
North, yeah.
Or something, north, I guess.
And mine is too, is we're all aware that that lot, to meet these setbacks, is essentially not buildable.
Correct.
So, no matter what goes there, there's going to be setback requirements, and these, like I said, these aren't out of, it looks like a lot when you look, they're asking for nine instead of 50, but it is, it's just because of where it hit that, because it's C2, not C1.
Yep.
And I think that argument about looking at it from a C1 versus C2 perspective also goes into some other parts of the criteria of the applicant, as far as, you know, the drop in square footage, right? That also is lower, as well as coverage is lower, or coverage is actually higher. So, their proposal actually aligns better with C1 zoning than C2.
But I wonder, if we're in C2, residential conversions are permitted, but if we're going beyond that to do six units instead of four, and there's not an existing home that's being converted, do we also need to consider a variance for the use and not just the setbacks?
My sense is if there had been one, that Doug would have insisted that this be part of the application.
That was my other question. Yeah, I think it is a C1, so we have to treat it as a C1, we can then compare it to the C2 because it's so close and it's an awkward lot and all of that, but we have to still, it has to meet the criteria of C1 in terms of what's allowed.
We could ask the applicant if that conversation has taken place, but my assumption would be that it has.
I would have assumed that it wouldn't have landed before all of us, but without, but without Doug here, if there is any commentary on the conversation, that would give me some comfort.
Can you give us any comfort in that, did that discussion take place?
Yeah, John met with both Dave Sharple's and Doug Eastman prior to even in parking.
Okay.
So, we went through the whole, the whole, or the whole proposal.
I'd make you stand at the mic, but I think you project enough.
I think we can safely assume that had additional variances been required in order to get to this stage.
We would be seeing them.
We would have them.
Just want to make sure I've touched on it.
This isn't, this isn't Mr. Smith's first rodeo with X3.
No, I was talking quietly.
Are we okay with the setbacks? Does anybody have any significant issues with the setback request?
If this occurred in a different area, yes, given where it's located, absolutely not, absolutely not.
And just to add to that, looking at the master plan is consistent with what you've described with bringing properties closer to eliminate the parking in front.
Putting on the road line versus...
Especially coming in closer to town.
Yep.
From 101.
Do we want to now embark on the density and building coverage requests? I suspect Bob has something to say.
The conversation regarding the C1 versus C2 has allayed some of the concerns that I had when it comes to density. I was concerned with six. I don't necessarily see a benefit to the town or to a butters in holding a line and saying you must only have four. I don't think that's necessarily beneficial. I don't think the, I don't think it makes a significant difference because the, once you've increased the size of the building envelope, it occurs to me, or appears to me, that there's sufficient room for six townhomes on that parcel, and we have at least indicated that we're willing to increase the size of the building envelope as requested in the application. So, my density concern, while I appreciate, and its cohort, or its partner there, the coverage, while I did have a concern coming in about six units, and the drop from 5,000 square foot per unit to 1960 is pretty significant, my fears have been allayed somewhat, if not significantly, by the conversation about C1 versus C2 and where we are. So, no, I don't really have concerns there that I did coming into the meeting.
Okay.
Which is why we have meetings.
Yes. I think I'm with you, I, it still seems significant to me, but it's also been an empty lot for eight, 10 years, so anything's going to look huge there, so I'm worried about the bulk of it more than anything, because if it is having parking underneath it now, they're going to, they will most likely be the 35-foot height.
Again, we've not been asked for a height there.
I know, I'm just thinking of the bulkiness of having, since you have six there, and they're all big, it's not a little two-story with six in it, it's going to be probably...
Well, given that directly across is a two-story, large two-story...
Hotel.
Well, no, that's same side, Gary Blake is directly across, which I guess is still Blake Auto, I'm not sure.
I think the layering helps of having three.
And then three?
And then three, that it's using the lot without crowding all of the units together.
Christian, would you mind putting up that other elevation that you had, or that other?
We had at the time.
And is it not depicting the hotel? Oh, sorry.
Well, no.
Sorry, don't answer, don't answer that.
You really can't.
I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah, she's thinking out loud. We have closed public session.
And I do think we need to keep in mind that this is still the preliminary, this still could change.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, but it's giving you an idea of weight, essentially, in the spot.
Now, this is looking from Portsmouth Avenue.
Yep.
Yep.
Hotels to the left.
Hotels to the left.
Yeah, you're standing in the Gary Blake parking lot. Hotels to the left.
And we'll admit, it looks better than an empty lot.
It is, it's a big building, also, let's face it, it's not small when you look at it.
But that's just the front building.
Right, that's just the rendering, I mean, the rendering in here looked to me more like Savannah or Charleston or something.
You can see the back building peeking out behind on the left-hand side there.
Right.
That's the, that's the back building.
It still does look a little southern.
Yeah, this looks very southern, with the full porches across, I was transported to Charleston there.
Yeah, exactly. We still got full porches on this one, just on the second.
Yeah, yeah, and this one is also a little deceptive in that it shows much more offset between the rear building where they're going to be aligned more than they are. So, it's only at the angle you'd be able to see the back building, which is good.
Yes.
Which is good, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, we've all agreed that it's in the C1, correct? I'm saying this right?
It's in C2. It's in C2. It's adjacent to C1.
C1.
And residential to the, to the back.
And residential, yeah, C1 is in the back of it.
So, since we have to go by what the zone is in, do we want to go through the variance criteria? So, it's in there in case, so in a butter clearly knows what we're thinking, or do you think we've explained it clearly enough during our discussions?
My sense, Madam Chair, is that we've explained it clearly enough.
Okay.
It's also documented in the, in here, as far as the...
The applicant did go through, did go through the criteria, and I did not note any places where I disagreed.
Okay.
With the conclusions that were reached. The only condition that I would ever apply to something like this is something that is unnecessary, which is full planning review.
Which it has to have.
Which it has to have, given the size of it. So, it is going to go through technical review, there will be discussion of fire and safety and drainage.
All the big concerns.
All the concerns, that this... All the concerns, that this is strictly a variance for the setbacks and the density and the building coverage.
Agreed.
Would you accept a motion?
Absolutely, sir.
Point of clarification before we move forward, do you wish one motion or two? Or is it simply the discussion that broke down into the two?
The discussion was to break them down into two. I think for a motion, we can join it into one.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the application of Stone Arch Development Corporation for variances from Article 4, Section 4.4, seeking relief from required minimum front, side, and rear setbacks, the minimum density requirement and maximum building coverage requirement for the proposed residential development of the property located at 57 Portsmouth Avenue as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll double second. Oh, Lord, I just had a brain loss. No discussion or discussion? I don't want to put, we've seconded? Vote? It's like to vote on the motion?
Ah.
Sorry, I'm mumbling.
You're looking at me.
Waiting for people to vote!
Yes, oh, vote!
Vote, sorry, I need to speak up.
I was waiting for an "all in favor."
Oh, sorry, it's been a day, I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by, nothing.
Sorry, I can't.
Variance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Martha, I'm clearly scatterbrained. Oh, I can't even say scatterbrained.
It's one of those days.
Okay, we're already 24-10.
Now I got to find the minutes.
All right.
I think we have one more point of business. We have some minutes to review. We have minutes to review from August, which we cannot because we do not have enough members present to do so. And we also need to, if you minds, excuse me, would you mind speaking up? We're still in session. Thank you. The minutes from the October meeting, I'm going to say that because I can't find the minutes right now. Anybody find anything with the October 15th minutes that they needed to be updated? I did not.
Nope.
I will move to approve the October 15th, 2024 zoning board of adjustment minutes as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. October minutes are approved, five to none. Nothing, zero, oh my, Lord, oh.
Oh, no. Well, is that part of it?
Mm, sorry, what was it?
Norwalk is spelled wrong.
Noak?
It's Noak.
Is it Noak?
It's not Norwalk, it's Noak.
No, it's Noak Room.
Isn't it Novak?
Ted Novak.
Yeah, but it says Novak.
It's pro, it's
Okay, it's right?
It's right.
Perfect, I love it. Good answer. I need to go home.
Do we have any motions? But I, wait a minute, we didn't meet in that room.
You're right.
Downstairs.
Will Wright Room. Nobody is going to challenge us over that.
Okay.
My Christians, good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
We've all clearly been here.
It's fine.
Can I get a motion?
It's fine, you're absolutely, motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Absolutely.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
He did it.
Not bad.
No.
No.
Not bad.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.